Meeting of the Hudson Board of Education for Monday, October 3rd. If you'll stand as you're able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, you have the agenda in front of you. If there is someone who would make a motion to approve that agenda? Motion by Dan, is there a second? Second by Lynn, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now into the report section of the agenda, starting with Mary Boanegabrotten.
Good evening, Board members and community members. As we report tonight, Tim Erickson and I, Director of Financial Services, will be presenting information about our recommendation. We also have Attorney Joe Langle here to talk about the purchase agreement. So, we have, as you know, had for a number of years a district goal on secondary space for learning, or middle school and high school space for learning, knowing about that need. So I'll talk about the need that we have, and then we'll get into details about the purchase agreement. This year, we have a district goal, and the district goal is make progress toward a long-term solution for grade six through 12 space for learning needs. And this represents the first step toward that goal. So Diane, if you'd move to the next slide. First of all, looking at our official enrollment, and this is just a snapshot of that, I will be talking up more about the early childhood through grade 12 enrollment at our meeting, our official meeting next week, our regular meeting next week. So looking at the 6-12 enrollment, and we're going to focus on district resident students, not open enrollment students, but just students that live in our district that attend our schools, our middle school and our high school. And compare that to the previous year. So if we first focus on the middle school, it has a capacity for 1,125 students. And the growth from last year to this year is 53 additional students. That reflects a little over a 4% increase in our enrollment, very, very significant. And we are 169 students over capacity with that increase. Looking at the high school, the high school's capacity, and I would call it limited capacity, and I'll address that later, that capacity is 1,680 students. And we see that the enrollment from last year to this year is stable with a slight six students less, and we basically say that's about the same. So looking at that and knowing that those middle school students will continue to move through the high school, it's very significant when we look at how do we address their learning needs. If we would look at just a summary of the rest of our enrollment, our elementary through high school enrollment, we only have two classes under 400. All of our classes are 400 or more except two. The ninth grade class is 398 students, and the third grade class is 397 students, so certainly just almost right at 400. And to give you a comparison, our graduating class of 2011, so last June, we had 391 students. And we have classes, they're as large right now as 440 students. So leaving us at 391, and we have classes that are coming in at 440, and we know they usually grow during that time period. If we go to the next slide, and hopefully my voice will last during this. Enrollment history, you remember, Board members, that demographer Dr. Hazel Reinhardt updated our projections in December of 2010. And in that executive summary, she highlighted the four bullets with a few more, but she said that we had 28% enrollment growth since 2000. That's certainly very, very significant. And even more significant is that 55% growth in kindergarten since 2000, knowing that those students are moving through our system now. The classes that are coming in are larger than the classes going out that I just talked about. So certainly significant when we see that growth in our kindergarten classes. And we've experienced almost a 2% enrollment growth during the economic slowdown, and Dr. Reinhardt talked about that as being very unique in the Twin Cities area. Our enrollment growth certainly has been primarily at the kindergarten through eighth grade level. And if we look at that 4% enrollment growth at the middle school this year, that compares to last year's enrollment growth at the middle school of 2.5%. That was 31 students. And we were very concerned about that increase because of the capacity of the building and being already over the capacity, but here we are this year with 4%. As we look at the future projections, Dr. Reinhardt said certainly we can expect future growth as our current elementary students move into middle school, move on to the high school. And we also experience growth from move-ins. Now that's a growth that probably has slowed somewhat, but it continues to be something that we will address in the future years. And all indicators, because of the community that we live in, its proximity to the Twin Cities and so forth, that that will continue to grow in the future. Diane, the next slide. So this slide looks at middle school capacity compared to those enrollment projections of Dr. Reinhardt's. And this is the 2010 projections. And you can see the capacity line, that blue line across the bottom of the graph, at 1,125 students. And we are well above that capacity, as I had said. You can see the blue triangle, that's where our enrollment is at the present time. And that enrollment is 1,294 students. And it compares to Dr. Reinhardt's starting projections for this year, and that's 1,305. So very, basically they're the same. So she's starting out, her projections match actually our enrollment. If we look at the two lines, the red line is the enrollment projections, that is the lowest projections. And then there's a range, and then I think it's a gray line, represents the higher enrollment projections. We expect over time to be within that range, but we may, one year during that time period, two years, be above it or below it, but it's really like averaging a trend over time through that time period. And we're right where she projected for the middle school. And you can see there's significant growth ahead of us. You might be concerned about looking at the downturn in 2019. And actually what that reflects are the lower birth rates during the economic slowdown. But enrollment projections based on Dr. Reinhardt's work are expected to climb after 2021, and if you look at the chart, that's where the chart ends. So that's really off the chart when it continues to go back up. Next slide. Looking at the middle school and the enrollment impact on space for learning, we've said many times that Hudson Middle School is the largest student population of any sixth through eighth middle school in the state of Wisconsin. It's over capacity, we've talked about that. Continued growth is projected, we're really out of classroom space. We currently have three classrooms at Hudson Prairie, so that's beyond our space constraints at the middle school. The middle school house concept, one of our large concerns, is eroding. That's an organizational system designed to support each student's success, both academically and developmentally. It's highly supported, I know, by this board and by our parents, and it breaks down a very large school for middle school students. We're losing that ability to use the middle school concept as a way, an organizational system for our students. We have 13 teachers, or evidence of that is we have 13 teachers who are in carts in sixth grade and seventh grade, and at the trimester, we'll be adding an additional teacher for the eighth grade who will also be in cart. And using rooms, this is a core teacher, and they will be, and I think it's Language Arts and Social Studies, Nancy, is that correct? Who will be teaching in spaces like the tech ed room and the Family and Consumer Science Room. If you look at the site of the middle school and include that with Hudson Prairie, there are 49 acres. There is little space for expansion on that site, and then the question is, would we want to expand it? If we added Hudson Prairie's student population to the middle school population, we would have approximately 1,800 students on that site, more students than we have at the high school. Very significant. So you'd have to ask, even if we had the space, would you want to add more space for this middle school? And that's just a concern, but that impact also affects the traffic, the neighborhood that surrounds the school. Certainly, I know that that's a big impact on our community. So Diane, would you go to the next slide? Now turning our attention to the high school and going back to Dr. Reinhardt's projections again, you can see that the high school enrollment, the actual enrollment of 1,635 students is not yet at capacity, but it's very close. So it's expected to reach capacity next year. And that our enrollment, I said, was 1,635, and the projection of Dr. Reinhardt starts at 1,664. That's a difference of 29 students, so very, very close for this year. The projections, you can see significantly an upward trend, and we will be well over the capacity of the building in 2020, or 2021. Doesn't that sound, that sounds way out there, but it is not that far. The lowest projection has us over 2,000 students. Quite concerning when we look at the space at the high school. The next slide. Looking at enrollment, enrollment that's already in Hudson, enrollment that is in the public schools and in our private schools. And if we looked at that very conservatively and moved that forward, students that are already here, what does it look like? So not projections anymore, but what does it look like when we move students forward? And that's what this chart tries to portray. What does it do to our enrollment over a four-year period? So we start out, and Tim, you're going to point to, because it is a little complicated when you see it for the first time. We'll start out with our actual enrollment at the high school, 1,635 in that far right column. And then we move to 2012-13. And what we've done in this chart is we've taken out the graduating class and the current graduating class, seniors, and we've replaced them with eighth graders. And we've replaced them with the actual number of students. So we now have four years for next year, eighth, ninth, 10, and 11, who will be the high school population of next year, and that's that first column, the 1,661. And we've looked at our private school enrollment, Trinity and St. Pat's, and we've said if we would get 50% of that enrollment, we would add those students. Now we generally get more than 50%, but we were being very conservative. Those students are already in Hudson, and you can see we've added 24 students. Well, they have 48 students combined this year. So we've added that, and we get a total for that year of 1,685 students. Now that continues through each year. So we go one more year back, the next year, 2013-14, we've gone into seventh grade because they would be moving into the high school that year. We're doing the same thing here. We add 21 students from our private schools because we've taken the actual number of those students who are in seventh grade who would be moving into the high school as freshmen, half of that, 21, adding it with the 24 that's already in the school, and we end up with When we get to 2015-16, we're adding in the fifth grade class as the incoming ninth graders. So that the column, the third column that says the private schools to ninth grade, we just froze the 20 students because we weren't sure historically what happens in their enrollment from fifth grade to sixth grade, moving into our middle school, and we didn't want to inflate that in any way, so we just moved the 20 forward. If I looked at the actual numbers, it would be larger than that if we looked at half of the actual numbers, but we just moved the 20 forward to be conservative, and this is a conservative look of Hudson students. So if we look at the four years, and in this model of moving students who are already in our system, already in Hudson schools, whether it's the Hudson School District, Trinity, or St. Pat's, then over this period of time in four years, the high school is well beyond capacity, and we have a growth of 179 high school students. Next slide. So looking at the high school that is projected to reach capacity next year, I talked about limited capacity, and the high school definitely has limited capacity because of the common areas. We lack space in the common areas. The high school wasn't designed to support the student population it has. We can add additional classrooms as we did when the district administration offices moved out of the high school, but we didn't add common area space. So we added more space, we increased the capacity at that time, but the common areas stayed the same. So that impacts the school. When we look at those common areas, they don't support the number of students we have right now. So for example, the cafeteria, the gyms, the media center, the circulation, the hallway space, those things don't support the current population, even if we have the number of classrooms we need. The high school just was never envisioned years ago as being this large. So also, we have a need for renovation at the high school to support today's learning, support our students to be prepared for their future as graduates moving on to post-secondary. For example, if we look at our art space at the high school, it's inadequate in two different areas, and I'm sure art teachers would think of others as well, but certainly the amount of space it is for today's learning is too small, and the space and what it supports for the curriculum is inadequate as well. Our classrooms, we have many classrooms that are too small for the number of students we have to support them. We need more dedicated science space to support STEM and growing science program, and computers. You know, technology when the high school was built and what was added on to, when the link was connected, the need for technology at that time was very different than the needs for students and their learning in technology. The site is a little over 43 acres. It is undersized for our program and for the number of students that we have, and particularly for a high school, even if we look just at the next four years and those numbers I rolled forward that were about 1,800 students. And I'm going to turn it over to Tim, and maybe, Tim, could we just change places for this one slide so we don't have to move all the microphones?
We, of course, we did study the UU site on County Truck Highway, UU, as far as its capacity or its ability to hold or to accommodate a larger secondary school. What we found out was the biggest drawback, really the impossibility of that site to accommodate a wastewater treatment plant, which is going to be, which would be required of a school that size. The DNR has different requirements, and so we would have to build a wastewater treatment plant out on that site. And because of the elevation changes, we've had elevation changes of up to 130 feet on that site, and it just doesn't accommodate that type of a system. The other issue with the site is that it's not adjacent to city boundaries, so we don't have, we don't have the ability to do an annexation, and so there's no way to bring city utilities into the site. So that, again, really highly summarized, but those are some of the drawbacks really to locating a larger secondary on that site.
Diane, do you want to move on to the next one? So after all the work that we have done to bring this to our Board of Education for consideration, we recommend the purchase of the agreement for St. Croy Meadows Dog Track. The Dog Track historically, just to give you a historical background, opened in 1991 at a price tag of over $40 million. It closed in 2001 after a decade of declining attendance and financial losses. There were repeated attempts to convert the property into a casino that failed, and it also created significant community debate. From that time forward, there has been speculation and concern in our community about what that property could become, given the current ownership. The district's and the community's interest in the site for a future school has been over multiple years. In 2004, our facility's task force approached the owners and asked about their interest in selling the property, and at that time, they were not interested in doing that. In 2005, when I came to the district, I spoke to a number of people in our community, and over and over again, the number one location for a future secondary school was the St. Croy Meadows Dog Track. Another theme that came out during those initial conversations with community members and community leaders and parents was to spread out the financial impact of addressing our elementary, middle school, and high school needs. And so we have done that. We started with this school, Rivercrest, and we had a referendum for Rivercrest and opened this building in 2008. With your approval, Board of Education, we will have another referendum for the St. Croy Meadows property as a future school site, again, one step closer to addressing our elementary, middle school, and high school space for learning needs. This is that next step. In 2009, the administration approached the owners again, and at that time, the price was too high, and we've been working on identifying properties, other properties, and also eventually coming back to this property. With the approval, the board's approval of a purchase agreement, and then a referendum to follow by our community, we have the opportunity to gain control of the property and transform it into a future community asset as a school site.
The summarized details of the purchase, the property's a 126-acre site. The purchase price is eight and a quarter million, 8.25 million dollars, and the estimated tax impact on a $200,000 home is between $10 and $20 per year, and that's dependent on the financing options that are, that the district is looking at. Currently, bond rates are at about, at the lowest level in about 50, more than 50 years. Real estate prices are also, as everyone knows, at a low point. So there is an opportunity here to finance and purchase a property at lower levels, at lower cost impacts. The next slide that's before you is a comparison of three different properties that the district has considered. The district actually went through and looked at several different properties. These are three comparable properties in that they both, they all three would accommodate a larger secondary school. The approximate acreage, you can see the approximate acreage of each one of those sites, and the approximate square footage converted from the acreage, and then the estimated sale or asking price. And I want to emphasize, the, on the St. Croy Business Park and the Hermes Floral on Highway 12, those prices are estimates at this point with the information that we have. We do know Hermes was listed for around $5 million, and the property in St. Croy Business Park on Hanley Road sold for somewhere, or is in the process of being closed. We don't know the exact sales price at this point, but again, our best estimate. The estimated prices per acre are listed there with St. Croy Meadows at $65,476, St. Croy Business Park at $81,250, and Hermes Floral at $69,444. And then you can see the calculations for square foot, price per square foot. So St. Croy Meadows is certainly, again, on the low end of these three properties in terms of cost, and it comes with utilities and certainly some site improvements that are already in place. And I forgot my pointer, but I'm going to try to, if you look on the left side of the screen, you can see the roadway going from north to south is County Road F, and as the road curves around to the east is Carmichael Road, so it gives you an indication of where the property sits. The large area, the large area in the middle is mainly parking lot, it's about 40 acres of parking lot. And then over to the right, just to the east of that parking lot, about in the middle is the facility itself. And then again, east of that, you can see an outline of an oval, that's the actual Dog Track. And then to the south of both the property and the Dog Track, both the building and the Dog Track are kennels. And again, we're dealing with a relatively flat, a very, very flat site, which lends itself to cost savings in any type of construction. The attributes, again, for St. Croy Meadows is it comes with city utilities. That is going to be a great, a great cost savings to the district. Primarily, again, it's a flat site, central location, it's nearest our student population center, it's accessible from multiple directions, it also, it was designed to carry a large volume of traffic. In looking at moving forward with that site, we certainly have environmental sustainability pieces such as potential reuse of portions of building materials and recycling of materials. And with that, I'm going to introduce our attorney, Joe Langle, from Ratwick, Rosack, and Maloney. Joe has worked with us on a number of projects here in the district, including Rivercrest, and now also with the purchase, with the purchase agreement before you for the purchase of the property. And Joe's going to summarize, go through the purchase agreement and summarize some of the details.
Good evening. I'll walk through some of the...
Joe, can you pull that a lot closer to you?
I'll walk through...
And up is on.
There you go.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now? I'll walk through the highlights of this agreement, a lot of it is boilerplate, but I want to hit the pertinent points that are unique to this agreement. And then if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those questions. The agreement, as you can see from the top, there is actually between three different parties, the district, Croyland Properties, and something called PSBC II LLC. Croyland is the entity that has held this property for years. It's the entity that has always owned the Dog Track. PSBC II is a limped liability corporation out of Minnesota that actually holds the mortgage on the property. So it's an offshoot of a bank that was created just to hold that mortgage. And I'll talk more about that relationship in a minute when we talk about the closing and the title work. As Tim indicated, the purchase price is eight and a quarter million, there's only a 5,000... There's only a $5,000 earnest money amount there, which is far less than what they sought. Mr. Erickson was able to negotiate that down quite a bit. So there's only $5,000 tied up while this process would move forward if it's approved. The contingencies are fairly normal. We have the right to inspect. Obviously, we're going to be looking at all the documents of record. We have the right to inspect the property. And the big contingency, of course, is that this is subject to the bond approval from the voters. So nothing happens on this property unless and until the voters approve the sale of the bond. In terms of the premises, we got a lot of boilerplate representations from the seller. Obviously, we are buying a building that's been sitting vacant for 10 years and you can tell by walking through it that it's been sitting vacant for 10 years. And there are certainly issues with the building. It is certainly not up to code at this point, but that's not the reason you're buying the property. The reason you're considering this property is because of size, location, and everything else. The closing on this property would not occur until after the referendum is approved and the bonds are sold and the cash is in hand. In terms of the deed that would be transferred, it is a limited warranty deed that they are willing to provide. That is a warranty deed that is only warranting what the seller did to the property, if you will, while the seller held it. In this case, I'm on page four here. In this case, what's going to happen is that Croixland, that the entity that's always held this property, is going to be transferring to its mortgage holder, PSBC II, at the time of closing. And it's PSBC II that will actually be transferring title over to the district. And the reason for that quick little turnaround there between those two entities is that the, the PSBC II is attempting to get a tax deal with the IRS off of this property, the idea being that they're going to be selling this for less than what they believe market value is. And the differences, they're clearly hoping for a tax benefit from that. So, that's why it's going to this entity from Croixland and that entity will only provide a limited warranty deed. What we're going to do to protect the district, given that limited warranty deed, is get a title insurance policy, and this is on page five, paragraph 10, that deletes all the standard exceptions and protects the district as much as possible. We're not anticipating any problems with the title history of this property, but we will eliminate all the exceptions that we can and get the fullest policy that we can to protect the district in terms of the title history on the property. We have a typical time period to move forward to review their title history that they're going to be providing to us. And the only other real things I wish to point out here is on page six, paragraph 12, the representations of warranties. Again, the district is buying this land as-is. Obviously, you're, you're buying an old and somewhat decrepit building and there are the costs associated with buying such a property. And as part of the closing, the district has to provide certain documentation to the, to the seller so that they can process their tax, the tax benefit here. And I, we don't anticipate any problems providing those documents and I don't think there's any exposure to the district in doing so. Remainder of this document is, is pretty boilerplate in terms of the condition of the premises, identification clauses and all that. There's nothing unusual about them at all. Really, the primary issues in here have to do with title and have to do with the condition of the property, all of which I think that we've, we've covered with this document. I think the district is in a good position at this point. Certainly, this is just the beginning of the process. If the board approves this, we will move forward and inspect the property, inspect the title and then do all those sorts of things immediately. And then, presuming everything works out and looks satisfactory, then we move forward with the referendum. So that's what we're at.
Madam President. Madam President and Board Members, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those at this time.
One question, just, just a limited warranty, can, what would normally be the, what would that, what would that normally be besides the exception of a limited warranty?
Normally, you'd want a general warranty deed. And the general warranty deed is a warranty that, where the seller is warranting title all the way back. And in this day and age, what you're getting from banks in lieu of any foreclosed property is you're only ever going to get a limited warranty deed because the bank will never warrant anything more than what they have done to the property. They just simply won't provide it. So, it's not uncommon to see the limited warranty deed. Certainly, we argued for a general warranty deed that just wouldn't, it wasn't a negotiating point in this, in this deal. So, in reaction to that, we get a title insurance policy that is as broad as possible and protects us as much as possible. And frankly, a general warranty deed is only as good as a financial condition of the person on the deed, which in this case is Croixland. And frankly, once this property is sold, my understanding is this is the only asset, so I don't expect that entity to even survive.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Dan.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. You know, the, I guess my question relates to the as-is provision that's in here and could you describe, you know, with a property of this age and, you know, being vacant as long as it has, what potentially we could run into in terms of some issues with the, with the building? And I'm assuming that within this agreement that we've made sure that we have the protections and the inspections and everything that we need to make sure as we're going through that property, if there's something that's, that we weren't expecting, that's, that's covered within this agreement?
The agreement indicates, as you've pointed out in paragraph 12A, that you're purchasing it in as-is, where is conditioned. And the reason for that, of course, is that this property's been sitting vacant for 10 years. The building has not been maintained. The building has had full-time security for those 10 years. It has had heat on for 10 years because of the water system, the...
Fire protection.
Fire suppression system requires it not be frozen, so it's been heated for 10 years. In that respect, it has continued to be maintained to that point, but certainly, it is not a move-in ready building by any stretch of the imagination. But on the other hand, it is unlikely you're going to be using the building either. It, it's a structure that is not frankly, all that old as buildings are concerned. You're not worrying about lead, you're not worrying about asbestos, you're not worrying about those types of things. It's simply a building that was used for relatively short times, been sitting empty. You're going to have to continue, I don't even want to say maintain, because really, maintain in, with respect to that building doesn't mean a whole lot because it's not much frankly to do with it other than keep the fire suppression system going. There's really not much left, left to do with it.
If I might add, the, yeah, the building is in, it, it's like Joe says, it's in a, it's in a state of disrepair. It hasn't been kept up, minimal maintenance done. The design of the building is, it was designed for a Dog Track and designed for, for that purpose, not, not for a secondary building. And we're going to be exploring ways to see what parts of the structure we can use and keep, but certainly, there will have to be, depending on what that is, we've got to be major modifications. So we're not really, the concern here isn't quite so much with the, the state of disrepair. The land, the land site is very positive. The building may be, part of that building may be, be able to be used, but again, that's not the, not the primary focus.
And Tim, just to further that, aren't we planning on a report to the board and our community about the usability of materials? I believe that's in November? Is that correct?
November, right, yes. We'll be, we'll be coming back to the board with a report just to, to look at and explore the usability of, of part of the building or just how much our architects think that we can use in a design.
And just looking ahead, should the board approve, take action to approve the offer to purchase, at our October 11 board meeting, we would have a report on site usability and then at our November 8 board meeting, we would have a report on the building and materials usability. Tom, you had a question?
Yeah, assuming that this proposal moves forward and then we move forward with inspections and determining the usability of this property and costs and so forth that we could incur, how does that affect, I, my assumption is it would affect the title insurance then that we would, we'd be looking at purchasing? Assuming that things are in fairly poor condition, the title insurance could be higher or it could be lower depending on what we find?
The, the title insurance, and I'll let Joe speak this as well, the title insurance really is protecting us for a clean title on the, on the land itself more so. Joe, you want to add to that?
Yeah, the title insurance generally is based upon, frankly, it's based upon the purchase price of the property. There are certain endorsements that may come into play for some properties that deal with encroachments and those types of things, but none of those that we've seen so far would have any impact on this one. It's, it's a pretty clean site in that respect, it appears at this point. So, it's really driven almost entirely by just the purchase price of the property.
Other questions?
Just one more. How about any liability for back taxes, anything like that? Do we have any liability associated with that?
No, the, the agreement indicates that all back taxes, and actually, they're paid up on taxes, would be the seller's responsibility. Everything's prorated to the date of closing and so forth.
And Dan?
Joe, another question. You had described this tax arrangement between these two entities. Can you talk a little bit more about that? Is that, is that something that's strictly between the sellers or is that something that we need to sort of have accounts take a look at to make sure that there's no issues that we could be subject to if that, if that tax scheme would, wouldn't work for the sellers?
It, it's really not an impact to the school district. Basically, what you have is a seller who has been carrying a, a massive debt for a long time and the debt on this property is far, far larger than the purchase price. So they're going to be writing off an enormous debt, millions of dollars worth. And so, what they're attempting to do here is get some tax break from that write-off by asserting that this property, the value of it was actually higher than what they're getting paid for it. And all they need from the district frankly is acknowledgement that this will be used for a nonprofit educational purpose, which, you know, you're not going to be reopening the Dog Tracks, that's, that's what you're going to be doing here. And access for their appraiser, which they'll probably do before you even close on it, and a signature on another form that it doesn't involve any kind of commitment or, how shall I say this? Representation by the school district. I don't see any problems for the school district's side of this.
Mark.
Thank you, Madam President. Joe, I was just curious, at the, the point at which the school district would take possession of this property following closing, would it be your suggestion that we also maintain a full-time security on that property?
Well, Tim and I have talked about this briefly. I don't, I don't know that that's as necessary and this is something that's going to have to be an internal discussion for you folks. They did it, we flat out asked them why they did it. They did it frankly because they felt that there's some occasional vandals out there and they were just doing to protect their land. I don't know that it's really necessary to have a 24/7 guard out there and to incur that cost. I think in this day and age, there's, there's other ways to monitor a property without having people out there 24 hours a day, but certainly, someone's going to have to go there and check on the systems and so forth occasionally, but there may be cheaper ways of doing than what they're doing.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
Are there other questions?
Just one more, Madam President. With our title insurance policy, we're assuming or understanding the complexities of switching from one entity to the other, so we're guaranteeing coverage of that double transfer.
Correct.
At closing, okay.
I think if there are no other questions, we'll move to item five on the agenda, which is to introduce the topic for action. After the item has been introduced as a topic for action, if there are community members who wish to speak to this action, please fill out a, a yellow form. Diane Radell has those up front and give them back to Diane and then we will invite you to address the board members. Madam President and Board Members, the administration recommends for your consideration an offer to purchase that we have just outlined for a future school site to purchase, the St. Croix Meadows Dog Track. Diane, are there any citizens' requests to speak? Are there any individuals who wish to address the board? I see, we'll just wait a moment, I see some yellow paper movement. Scott, since it appears that you're the only one who has an interest, we would invite you to actually just come up front and state your name and address. You can turn the piece of paper in after you've spoken to the board. We will ask you to do that for the record, but we'll let you speak first. I assume there's a microphone back there? Okay. So Scott, if you could just state your name and your address for the record and then go ahead and make your comments.
My name is Scott Snyder, 1209 Riverside Drive North in North Hudson. And I've been a resident of the school district since 1962. I started kindergarten at EP Rock and spent, I was a graduate of class of 1976. I'm not a demographic expert on any stretch of the imagination, former school teacher. After graduating from the University of Wisconsin-Madison, I taught at St. Pat's for five years. I encourage the board to pursue this. If it's not this site, some site, I challenge this board to what your predecessors have done since I was a small boy. I can name many of those people and the courage they had when they bought the land for EP Rock, the expansion for Holton, when they bought the land for North Hudson, when they made the improvements when I was a, there was a referendum that, when I was in the junior high building, the existing west portion of the high school. When the current high school was a cornfield pasturing cattle from the Stewart Farm across the street. Prior boards had the vision and the courage to follow through to meet the needs of the coming generations. And I wear with a lot of pride, a graduate of the class of 76, my brother class of 74, my sister class of 71, a current sophomore at Hudson High School. She finds it hard to believe that I spent half my high school years downtown at Oak Street. It was a big deal. My class was the first class that graduated, spent the whole year, class of 76, at the current building. And it was tough, I think back now, 35 years later, we just had our 35-year classroom unit. I think back now, it was difficult to move in those hallways then. I can't imagine what's going through that building and we had three grades, seven, eight, nine, in the West High School. We had three grades, sophomore, junior, senior, in the New High School. I still refer to it as the New High School. I can't imagine putting four grades in there now what they're trying to accomplish. So I encourage you to have the vision. It won't be an easy decision. It will only postpone the inevitable. When the population signs, when you would come into Hudson in those days, which was right at 17th Street at Gilbert Motors, where it used to be where the current new, well, the old Red Owl and the current, I'm thinking of, pardon? Well, Whole Foods, yeah, but on 17th and Ward Avenue, I grew up on Ward Avenue, that was the city limits. And the sign said something like 2,700 residents. So 30, 43 years later, the need's not going to go away. I encourage you to study this thoroughly, thoughtfully, and to explore the options because the need will still be there. because the need will still be there. And someday, your legacy will be, did you make the right decision? As volunteer citizens to this board, representing the residents of the school district of Hudson, and as a board and your team, did they have the foresight and the courage to make the right decisions for 50, 60 years down the road, long after all of us are gone? There's a structure on Oak and 4th Street that your predecessors made a decision on nearly 100 years ago. It's still serving this district well. The same hopefully can be said of this board, that they had the vision and the courage to make those decisions. It sounds like a no-brainer. Many of my family members and friends that I know, maybe you touched on it earlier, this property's been talked about as a long time. I have no visions that the infrastructure is even viable as a structure to be used as a school, but the property is sweet. 126 acres, right in the middle of our community, and I'm fully supportive of it. I'll pay my $20 tonight to do the study or to do the purchase agreement. And long-term down the road, it'll be money well-spent now. Even in tough economic times, it'll take more courage to do it because the responsibility of all of us is to educate our youth. And the private sector or the public sector will all benefit from a highly educated youth. And Hudson has to take no backseat to anyone for the 43 years or 48 years that I've lived in this district, to any school district. And that's a tribute to your predecessors and the staff that's gone through those, all those schools. So please consider it thoughtfully. And I, as one resident, and my wife, class of 79, wanted me to reiterate it. She's also supportive of it. And my father-in-law, from the class of 47, is, also speaks highly of the opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Scott. Are there any other citizens who request to speak to the board? All right. Board members, with the topic in front of you, are there any final questions? Hearing none, is there someone who would be willing to make a motion? There is recommended motion language on your agenda.
Madam President, I would move approval of the purchase agreement dated September 15, 2011, with Crolyland Properties LTD and PSBC Two LLC for land and buildings generally known as St. Croix Meadows, 2200 Carmichael Road, City of Hudson, Wisconsin, and authorize the Board of Education President and Clerk to execute the agreement.
Motion by Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, team, and we look forward to hearing the next steps. So let's move forward with the few next steps that I know our community will be interested in. This has been a long-term commitment by the board, and I know this board has worked very hard to understand all the issues around this property and the needs in our community. So we talked just a few minutes ago about the next steps for our next couple meetings and some reports. Barb has also been interested, as I know our community is, in what's going to happen to the UU site, County Road UU. So we'll put that on as well, either the next meeting or in November, and talk about that. In addition to, as I said before, the reports at October 11 and the reports November 8 coming to the Board of Education. They were up there. It's hard to see from here. All right. And moving on to long-range planning steps for our middle school and high school space for learning needs. The first step that you've taken action to move forward tonight is a referendum for a future school site, namely, coming to our community, we will have a referendum to purchase St. Croix Meadows Dog Track. The board will determine whether that referendum is in February in the primary election or in the April general election. And the purchase agreement does not extend the timeline beyond that April election. So that would be the date, the deadline, that we would have to have a referendum. I want to be really clear to everyone in our community that no 6 through 12 or middle school, high school space for learning building solution has been determined yet. That's part of the next step. This is planning for future, for growth, current growth, and future growth to purchase property, just as this site, Rivercrest, the site itself was purchased previously before there was actually a referendum for a school on this site. So following action by our community and a decision that our community will make about the dog track site will be the second step, and that's to determine grade 6 through 12 space for learning long-range solution. We will take the following steps to evaluate our current 6-12 facilities and assets for future use, remodeling and/or additions. We may start that a little bit earlier during this time period before the referendum. We'll also determine future programming needs in 6 through 12 and implementing our HSD 2025 vision. You know that the board has supported the middle school house concept that we talked about earlier, and also, we have a continuing district goal in high school learning for the future as it moves forward. That would be important to consider as we move forward with space for learning. We will identify potential, then, solutions for space for learning options. So potential options, and it will be critical that our community becomes engaged in that conversation so that we can determine what is the community's solution to our growing student population. And then the board will approve a second referendum for that final community solution to our 6 through 12 space needs. And I just want to continue to reiterate that we have space needs at the middle school first, and then we will have space needs at the high school as well. So it's whatever that solution is and whatever options we consider, need to address both And then, I think there's one last slide that we have. So certainly, we want our community to become engaged in this conversation about purchase of this property. We want ideas, questions, feedback, and you can send those to the board and administrators through our connections link. And then updates will occur on our district website with the information we've shared tonight and with future information as it comes forward. There's significant work ahead, certainly, for the Board of Education as you move through a number of decisions that you'll need to make along the way, and we'll be sharing this information with our community as we move forward towards the referendum for the property. All right. Thank you, Mary. With that, I think we are ready to adjourn. If there is someone who would make that motion. Motion by Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you for joining us tonight.